Peace, peace. What's going on everybody? Welcome back to another edition of Space Invaders TV. It is October the fourteenth, Friday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I know it's been a minute, um, you know, of me not posting any content or anything up on, up on the channel here. But, um, I've been busy for one and then, you know, uh, it's been many things that I felt like what we continue to see that's going on around the country. Uh, it's something that I had already, I've, I've already spoken on and now it's just taking shape right now, um, taking shape and taking place, you know, um. So it's, 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 it's much content that I have put out, you know, since twenty twenty um, to present day. It's like a lot of stuff that I was, I was ahead of the curve on and just watching and reading and, 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 and actually giving you guys that, the heads up on a lot of this information. Let me adjust this. So, yeah, um, but I'm back this today and, uh, we, we, we're gonna talk about the situation. You see the title here, um. We, we're gonna talk about this situation with these pilot homes in Greensboro. Before I get into that, I want to say peace and blessings to everybody. Welcome, um, thanks for checking in, uh. Do make sure that, uh, uh, you, you tell a friend and tell a friend, share the channel here, you know? Cause even when I'm not on, I still have so much content that you could just go to. You could just go to it. So many things that I talk about, uh, locally, when we talk about Greensboro, Effa County, if you from that area, uh, from the state of North Carolina, I, I just talk about so many things, um. Yeah, um, and I know it was a shooting down in Raleigh on Thursday evening, uh, October the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, peace and blessings. Be with all of those who were involved in that issue and, and, uh, a young man, uh, took the lives of a few people and still, you know, there are gonna be people, those families of those that were lost, um. Lot of pain, lot of healing. It's gonna have to take place and it's gonna take time, you know, um. Mental health is real, ladies and gentlemen, it's real. And, um, I'm not paying, I'm not just solely placing a blame on that, but it's real, um. A lot of times, you know, you, you figure out the, out the, out the course of your life, you know, if you, you know, going to a death hood, there's some things you, you have to, we have to really remember too. A lot of things that, you know, and then my research of mental health and everything. A lot of things that may not, that don't seem right to the brain that may take place. And it'll cause us to go back and rethink about those things that like, you know, we just seen. It's as if you're riding down the street and you see something weird. Not saying that it's something harmful to anybody, but you just see something weird and you like, wow. And you keep going. But that thing, whatever it was, we, we can be in the car together. That thing might have not affected me. We might have both seen this thing. We in the car together, whatever it is. It might have not affected me, but it might have affected you to the point where later on in the day, you're home thinking about what you seen. And it, and it, and it worried you. That's a trauma. Mental health. So a lot of us, we may seem that, yeah, we need, we may need counseling and to talk to someone about the things that we have endured or seen throughout the course of our lives, you know? And so then you imagine a child, cause you guys know how I feel about the children. I'm all for the children. I, I have a passion for the children. I love their, I mean, they're innocent and, you know, their minds and just to get to talk to some of them, they'll blow your mind, you know, um. But so just imagine the child, you know, um, what they may see. You have so many children coming up in foster systems, foster care system and, um, water, the state or whatever and, um, just imagine the things that they see. Imagine those cases daily, you know, um, you know, even being in the, the care of that. So then they grow up and then they, you know, they have to relive. They, they, that, 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 that stuff never goes away. We never know what someone is actually going through. But then they, that pain gets forced on us on the outside and, um, but there were those that were around that could have intervened and possibly they may have seen that family member, that friend or whatever, struggling with something. That friend, it was somebody that that friend would confide in that maybe dealing with a mental health, uh, crisis. Um, they may, they're, 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 there's someone that they would listen to, but maybe that person just was not tapping in, you know, um, but so my heart prayers go out to the families and down in, uh, Raleigh, North Carolina, um, that lost their family member on, uh, on Thursday, uh, October the, uh, the thirteenth, um, yeah, just a sad situation, man. And anybody dealing in that situation. And if you know anybody, you guys know I've spoken about mental health before. If you know anybody that's going through something and try to help them and talk to them, you know, um, I, I even spoke about some months ago when I said, you know, after me just doing all the videos from twenty twenty and reading so many stories, you know, and, and, and so many things and emails I would get. I needed a, you know, I, I, I needed a wind down and I needed to step back, you know? Because when you're, you, when you're just talking about so many things going on, that, that aren't, that, that may not be traumatizing. That may not been traumatizing to me, but there were, there were traumatizing situations that I would talk about. So in turn, it really did take a toll on me and I had to step back for a minute. And so I had to do a reality check, a mental check, uh, on myself and then actually check myself and say, hey, look, step back for a while and not put so much out and, you know, um, even though I wasn't, I will put sometimes, sometimes, you know, normally it was one, uh, show a week, but then sometimes depending on what it was, it could go two, three, I will put out a week, you know, um. And so when it got to that point, I knew, I said, okay, I gotta back up. Cause you know, talking about certain situations, that is, you know, that put a lot on you, you know, it put a lot on you. So, yeah. But I, I want to talk about this situation here, about the homeless situation here in the city. Uh, oh, and what you say in the back of me, folks, this is another thing I've been busy on. My books here, Hamse Vision, Hamse Vision's part two, which is this here, Hamse Vision part two, uh, From the Bricks to the Sticks, uh, these are my books and these are, these are, these are, right, is, uh, Hamse Vision is my po- my poetry books, my poetic books, you know, um. And it's about their uplifting, spiritual, inspirational, you know, um. And then From the Bricks to the Sticks just talks about, it's a, it's my first script for movie that I done and I put it in raw. This is the first script I did is in his rawest form that I, I'm, I'm showing you the errors and everything. Cause it's basically like, this is my first, this was my first script that I wrote. I didn't know how to do it. I never had went to school for it, but this, 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 this right here meant a lot to me, you know, um, along with, you know, what really had kicked it all off for me was having, you know, I had the local TV show out of Greensboro, uh, North Carolina, um, titled GGN TV, which stood for Generation Got Next. And it was just a platform to, to introduce and put people, uh, shine a spotlight on anybody that was in the community around us, around the county that was doing something positive or whatever. Whether it been entertainment, whether it been, uh, government, city government, um, whatever they were doing, you know, uh, giving back to the community and whatever shape or form, you know, uh, I even had talked to homeless, you know, um, talked to, uh, the director at the time, big brother, big sister in Greensboro. So I had been around and, you know, so this ain't, this ain't, this ain't, this no by shape form, nothing new. This channel had been around since, you know, uh, wow, I think my channel has been around since two thousand and eight, you know? So I was on this thing back then, but I, I just sat dormant in twenty ten, I rebooted my channel here and I felt the need to talk to the people and give them more wider vision of, you know, and not just a tunnel vision because what media was showing. So, yeah, so, uh, you know, these books, this is writings over ten years and these books right here, I'm on track to put out, uh, four books this year. So these are my first three. Um, and we talking about this year, meaning that these books, we putting out four books in the third and fourth quarter, you know, between the third and the fourth quarter of the year of twenty twenty-two. So I feel like I'm on a historic thing right here because not a, not an author that I've known has put out four books in one year, you know, and let alone not even one year, just the last two quarters of the year, you know, putting out four, four books. So my fourth book will be out, you know, in December, I'm putting it out. So, yeah, um, and that's a drama thriller. So I write all types of, 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 um, stories and poetry and, um, you know, um, I have a comedy, you know, so it's just so many things. So my writing, I'm well, uh, versus verse with my writing, you know, I don't just stick to one, to one thing, cause my mind is so broad. I just can't stick to one thing. You know, um, I have over two hundred poetry pieces that I've written, you know, over the years, over the like twenty years. So, and this is not nothing that's, that's new to me. I was always a writer as a young child. And, uh, so it, it took me some time after sports and all that to tap into it. So anyway, without further ado, that's that. You can find my books wherever books are sold, online, Barnes and Nobles, Walmart, Amazon, uh, uh, Booktopia, Books-A-Million, oh God, everywhere, even the smaller books, um. I found out yesterday that, uh, From the Bricks to the Sticks is in South Africa. So I, I have worldwide distribution. So I'm everywhere, you know, you can find, you can find these titles here definitely on Amazon. Amazon has all of my, all the titles as well. So, yeah, check, check me out, you know, you, you can see, get a little more insight about who I am through my writing a little bit, get an understanding of who, where my mind goes. So, yeah, without further ado, we're gonna jump right into this, um. So the city council, this is something I read in the Rhino Times, right? Let me spin y'all around here. This was something that I had read, read in the Rhino Times and I just was like, what in the world? Like I've heard about the pilot homes and then I seen them and I just was like, man, that don't, that looks a little, you know, I don't know about that. That looks a little, I don't know about these pilot homes, you know, um. If we gonna do it, you gonna do it. And I'm meaning to say that, that talking about Greensboro City Council on October the tenth, they were all in favor of for these pilot shelters, you know, um. They don't have bathrooms in them. They just have like one bed in them or what have you, but they all voted on them, but have no place to put them. This is the stuff that I'm talking about. Can I please read this for you briefly? Okay. Pilot shelter vote, pilot shelter vote raises unanswered questions about a project. This was posted by John Hammer of Rhino Times on October the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, okay? Details on the proposed project to provide temporary housing for the homeless are few and far between. At a special meeting on Monday, October the tenth, the city council voted seventy-one, seven to one to allocate five hundred and thirty-five thousand to purchase forty pilot houses for the doorway project to provide temporary housing for the homeless. Housing and Neighborhood Department Director Michelle Kennedy said the city would need about one quarter acre lot to accommodate the forty pilot houses, which are eight hun- eight, sorry, eight feet by eight feet, providing sixty-four square feet of living space for two people. Okay. Sorry. I think I said one is two people, um. So two people inside of this box, okay? City, city manager, Ty Jo- Wild, Wild Bill, I can't pronounce this guy name, right? The city, the Greensboro city manager, Ty, said the, that the location of the temporary housing should not place an extra burden on the occupants by taking them far away from their natural support system. He also said that it had to be located close to transit services. A map was provided with four homeless points of frequency. The RNCN, the Department of Social Service, the Interactive Resource Center, da, 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 uh, who's this? The Greensboro Urban Ministry. The map indicated that the temporary housing should be located within a mile at least one of the facilities. City Council Zach Mathney, when asked where the temporary housing project will be located, stated in an email that the city staff will not be releasing the location. So I don't, so I do not know, nor does any city council member. Mayor Nancy Vaughn said that she understood that the location of the temporary housing community had not been selected. She suggested the city council, the city consider placing the pilot shelters inside a vacant big box store or other large vacant building, which would provide additional security protection from the elements. There are a lot of questions that were not answered before the vote on Monday. One of the total cost, what is the total cost of the project? Kennedy said that two bedroom facilities with two showers, two sinks and two toilets would need to be provided for the forty pilot shelters. And the cost of those was about a hundred thousand each. There was also no estimate of the cost of preparing the site for the pilot shelter or the whole cost of management and security for the site. All right. So this guy, let's go here. I didn't even know how he get, I know how he wound up. Nobody's paying attention, but this Zach Ma- Ma- McConney, Matt, Mattney, Harvey says his name, right? I'm trying to figure out how did he wind up back on there. I thought he was with the city, he was with, uh, working with the, uh, Greater Greensboro, thought he left the city council and went to work for the Greater Greensboro with the businesses, helping the businesses or whatever, like sitting on the board for the businesses or something like that. Okay. I thought he was there, you know? Not trying to throw the shade at him, but the guy had an alcoholic problem and everything like that. But let's not forget about that. Okay? Um, let me tap in so I can put you onto that. All right, um. So I'm trying to fi- figure out how did he wind up back on there. Let's see. I wanna be, I wanna be, I wanna be straight. Okay, here we go. Yeah, I, I wasn't lying. Okay? I'm gonna give y'all the actual data of this guy right here. First of all, this is him right here. All right? Okay? Uh, former Greensboro councilman Zach Mathney was charged with driving while impaired early Friday morning, says Susan Danson, public info- information officer with the Greensboro Police Department. Authorities found that forty-two-year-old Matthew, Mathney, president of Downtown Greensboro Inc. was charged with DWI when a police officer found him asleep with his head on the stain wheel on a black Land Rover. All right, that was in twenty fifteen. That was back in twenty fifteen, okay? Back in October of twenty fifteen. So I'm trying to figure out how he even back on there. See, he left there and went to Downtown Greensboro, which helps the local businesses. So they sent him an email. He ain't even know. He's talking about, yeah, I can't release that information and the city council can't either. Cause they don't, they don't even know. And the mayor don't even know. So how everybody vote on something, but they don't know the Pacifics. They just voted on these boxes to put somewhere. They don't know where they're gonna put them at. Then they don't, they, they didn't have, they didn't have, uh, showers or, or anything like that. How, how, how are they gonna feed them? You know, they put them in housing. Then they're like, oh, well, we can't. Do you know what you, you know that with them and the city manager talking to Greensboro, North Carolina, right? You guys know that you want them in a certain area where they can have access to, uh, 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 some of the, uh, the, 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 the help that they would need outside of that, being that, uh, the urban ministry and getting to, uh, whatever business they need to handle. You know that you want them in a certain area, but you haven't even picked it out. How about this? You, you have an area right there on, um, right where Elm Eugene and, uh, Gate City Boulevard. I think it was an area where you were putting the food trucks at, um. If you guys would stop trying to, uh, control that situation with the food trucks and just let them run and make their money around the city. Um, you can move them out of there, you know, out of that if they're still in there. Cause it's like a big open space in there. You guys, if you from Greensboro, you probably never paid attention to it. It's like writing on the wall. But if you look in there, there's a big, it's a big area in there. It's on Gate City Boulevard. Um, ga- is, is, is on Gate City Boulevard and like Elm U- uh, uh, Elm Eugene kinda sits on a corner and on a corner across from the Goodwill. Now that's the, um, yeah, from the urban ministries. It kinda sits right across the street from the urban ministries there. That's a big space there. You can, you can, you can actually put the, put, put, put it back there, but not only that, you know? So you guys are doing that. You never talked, you never thought about like, don't you guys always talking about zoning and all of these things? What about the zoning? Isn't that gonna interfere? What, what would, excuse me? What would that do to, uh, the folks that own homes? How would that, uh, fare with the value there? And, um, why, why, why you can't put them in a better location anyway? Why do they still have to be in the same areas where they, where, where, where the homeless frequent anyway, which is that Elm Eugene and Gate City Boulevard around that corner all around downtown? Why, why do you want, why do you wanna have them consistently in that area? You already have shelters there, um, in those areas of downtown and in walking distance of the, uh, bus terminal and, uh, just all any business that they would need to handle. They already, you have a home, two, couple of homeless shelters already in that area. So why not put these places? You don't have to put them so far out, these pilot shelters, you call them. You don't have to put them so far out. But hey, let's put them somewhere where it looks habitable. That it looks presentable better, you know, instead of just having it, you know, because, but you guys don't know what you're putting it on anyway, right? So why, why, why did you vote on it and why did you vote on the Greensboro city council members? Why? Why? And again, I told you guys, why, why is Nancy Vaughn even in there? You see, you know, this is, this is the crap I'm talking about. We got people here, these people, you, you, they, they're, they're living in the city. Some were born and raised in, in this city and still making the craziest decisions. How are you voting on something, but you don't even have the, where you gonna put it at? You only voted on the box with two people that live in this box. It doesn't have any bathrooms. It does, no sha- no, no shower. How, how are they gonna, how, how are they gonna be fed? Let me, let me put you onto something Greensboro. Okay? You can look into this, okay? Um, you guys need to look into container homes, okay? And container homes will actually be suitable for anybody. They're habitable for anybody and it's actually cheaper, okay? I often even wonder right now, even at this time, why isn't it, why isn't it even promoted? Um. Because if you look up container homes, look, 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 look through YouTube, Google container homes and you'll see how they look. They're, it is, it is cost efficient, um, it's, it's sustainable, uh, and they look great. They're doing it all over. They're doing it every other place in the country, like, you know, out in the Midwest, the Northwest of the country. Um, even on the West Coast, they're, they're building these things south, down in the Southwest, you know, you have two, you have a couple of locations here in North Carolina that have the container homes. That's in, uh, I was kinda surprised out on, um, Chapel Hill, around Chapel Hill, uh, and I forgot some, it's somewhere else. Don't quote me. I think back east of the state. Um, South Carolina has a couple of container homes, folks that have some down there, um. And there's a few, a, a few, uh, developers. I even looked into, into it and, and, cause I was interested in, in that, you know, and, 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 and maybe doing like an Airbnb with it. Like it was interesting, but you, and you, and, and, and you can, and you can do it in the city. You can have them in the city here. Now we're wondering why they not even looking into that or do they even know about that? Probably not. But let me run something by you right here. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, uh, Newark, New Jersey, okay? My home city and state, right? They embarked on something and they, uh, they have shipping container homes, okay? They, they got, they have it as like a little community. They got it nice, um, it's livable, have showers in there. Uh, two people can sleep. They have a little living quarter inside of them. Let me, let me, let me read it to you real quick. Uh, the mayor of Newark, New Jersey, uh, Mayor Roz Baraka, he, uh, they, 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 they embarked on this. It's called New Hope Village. That's what it's called, okay? It's a trick more commonly associated with human smugglers, but putting people in shipping containers is also a trend in the tiny house movement. And now an innovative approach to combat homelessness in Newark, Mayor Roz Barak just un- just unveiled seven we try to, try, try, retrofitted containers to house up to twenty-four people for a ninety-day pilot program set up on a vacant lot. They featured twenty cheerfully decorated dorm style rooms with bunk beds. There are also separate showers. The design is Steve Snyder of the California-based nonprofit Home for the Homeless, who has a background in manufacturing electric vehicles, a fascination with tiny home living and some experience with homelessness himself. He told Star Ledger editorial, uh, board member Julie O'Connor below, below is an edited script. You say tiny houses were inspiration. Have you lived in one yourself? This is the developer, Steve Snyder responded. I found myself homeless twice in my life, both by fire. When I was a child, we lost everything and I had to live in a camper for two years while we were rebuilding. It was very tiny quarters, smaller than the shelter that we provided. And I lost my own home in the wildfires in California back in twenty seventeen. I went from a four thousand square foot house to a hotel room, then a tiny house of about three hundred square feet for a couple of years. It's been a reduction. I had a lot of stuff I accumulated from traveling all over the world. There's a certain liberating feeling when you finally get rid of that stuff and you really don't need a lot of space. When you don't have a lot of material possession, space is irrelevant and you just want to be comfortable. All right. So that, that was that. I'm trying to look for more information, but that was that. So container homes, look into that Greensboro. Okay? That will, that probably will look much better. That'll help you, that will give, uh, that will give those new residents, you know, and those shelters more space. You'll, you'll be able to have the showers, to have a small living quarter, um, you can put it out somewhere. And if you're worried about how they will be able to transfer, get, get them to where they need to be, maybe, maybe, maybe you guys should set up some type of transit just for that, just for those in the shelters. We know they don't have cars, right? So why don't we, why don't you shut up, set up some type of transit? You have to be innovative, okay? And what we, what we see a lot of times is we have these people sitting on these boards and everything around the country. And I'm talking on Greensboro, North Carolina, but this is in a hole in what you're seeing in its entirety, I should say, and what you're seeing around the country and a lot of places and certain places that don't wanna move with the times. They have people on it that are not innovators. That don't wanna move with the times, they have people on it that are not innovators, you have to be innovative. You can't speak for the people if you don't speak to the people, you can't do for the people if you're not researching for the people. If you're gonna sit on these boards and everything, you're supposed to be the eyes and the ears for the people. What the people don't see, because the people are boots on the ground paint, they're, they're working, they're seeing what they're seeing in their communities. But you are on another level where you should be seeing the things and. Being able to counter these situations and get, and getting ahead of it, you know. Because you are in a position where you have a- access to other information. Like, yeah, we can all go to the internet, but you guys have other a- 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 access, which is to funding. Information on the funding, um, and the land. So, you need to be innovative, that's, that is just crazy for you guys to vote on something, but nobody has. No understanding of where you gonna put it at, uh, you didn't ever have a shower. Uh, wh- wh- where, where they gonna bathe, you, you didn't have none of that, you just had a pilot home in this box, that doesn't look, even look presentable either. It really doesn't, you know, and how long are they to stay in those things, like, in those boxes? It's almost like, there's like a, a jail, a little jail cell on a street. That, you know, for two people to be, be in that, just this box. You worrying about, okay, being warm, and but we, if we gonna do something, let's do it, and let's do it. And let's do it planned out, be, have this thing planned out, you know, it was just a thought. Somebody just sat there and said, oh, you know what we can do to get them off the street? We can just make these, these little like tiny, on these little boxes, and we can. They're still human beings, so if we gonna help and we gonna do something, if we gonna tap into the innovation. Then be innovative. That's my time, folks, again, that's your guy Rashawn, hey, make sure, hey, for all my avid readers, make sure you get out there, check it out. From the Bricks to the Sticks, we got, uh, that's, that's, uh, my first script I ever wrote, you know, um. Uh, it was here, it's in its raw form now, so when you see it, it's gonna be in its raw form, the writing and everything, you know, um, and I'm just showing my growth. This book, this was the first one I put out this year, and this was just to show my growth, you know what I mean, as a writer when I started out, you know. Um, actually just, you know, started taking it serious, Hamse Visions, you know, this is, uh, my poetry book. Um, po- poetic pieces, um, very inspirational, if you know about the Hamse. You know, if you know about Hamse, uh, it's very inspirational about protecting your peace, protecting your space, um. And elevation. Hamse Visions two, you know, it's, it just picks up where Hamse Vision one le- left off at. And, uh, yeah, so you see I had downsides, uh, in the size of the book as well. But, uh, yeah, uh, positive energy, direction is key, Hamse Vision two, so yes, ladies and gentlemen, you can find my books. Wherever books are sold online, um, all around the country from PA. Bookstores in PA, DC, uh, Washington State, Yakinma, Washington to be exactly. Uh, California, I have worldwide distribution on the books, so, yeah. Wherever books are sold, Amazon, Walmart, Barnes and Nobles, Booktopia, Books-A-Million. Um, Lulu Books, um, all over, folks, all over, uh. So, yeah, Williamsport, Pennsylvania, at O- O- Otto, uh, Otto Bookstore, um. Yeah, so, just tap in, folks, that's my time. I'm your host, Rashawn, AKA Looka, once again, this is Space Invaded TV, it is October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Peace and blessings be with all of you, make sure you share this content, don't just hold it for yourself, and tell a friend, tell a friend. Until next time, I'm out, folks.